I'll call to order this meeting of the City Council, City of Kingman City Council Meeting. We will have roll call.
Mayor Watkins is excused tonight. Vice Mayor Samley?
Here.
Councilmember Dykens?
Here.
Councilmember Savage?
Here.
Councilmembers Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
We have a call.
All right, if you'll stand with me for the invocation.
Recording in progress.
We don't have our invoker and then we will stand for a moment of silence and then we will go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Walker.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first this evening we have awards and recognition. We have a proclamation to read for the Amateur Radio Week. Whereas amateur radio operations are celebrated over a century of the miracle of the human voice broadcast over the airwaves, and whereas amateur radio has continued to provide a bridge between peoples, societies, and countries by creating friendships and the sharing of ideas, and whereas amateur radio operators have also provided countless hours of community services both in emergencies and to other local organizations throughout these decades, and whereas these amateur radio services are provided wholly uncompensated, and whereas the state also recognizes the services amateur radios people also provide to our many emergency response organizations including Mojave County Emergency Management, and whereas these same individuals have further demonstrated their value in public assistance by providing free radio communications for local parades, bike-a-thons, walk-a-thons, fairs, and other charitable public events, and whereas the City of Kingman, Arizona recognizes and appreciates the diligence of these hams who also serve as weather spotters in the Skywarn Program of the National Weather Service, and whereas ARRL is the National Association for Amateur Radio in the USA, and whereas ARRL Amateur Radio Field Day Exercise will take place on June 28th and 29th, 2025, and is a 24-hour emergency preparedness exercise and demonstration of the radio amateur skills and readiness to provide self-supporting communications without further infrastructure being required. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Ken Watkins, Mayor of Kingman, Arizona, do hereby officially recognize and designate the fourth full week of June each year as Amateur Radio Week, witnessed by our mayor, Ken Watkins, and attested by our clerk, Annie Meredith. So I want to go ahead and give Spirit Mountain, I know that you're here, and if you'd like to approach the podium and if you have anything to say. And then we'll get a photo with our council. Okay, then council, will you join me down for a photo, please?
You can't stand there.
The window?
Okay.
How do we get a copy of that? That's how I see it.
I try.
Trying to hide it in the back. That's a trick I try to pull.
Okay, presentations, we'll move on to 2A, the Walupi Valley Groundwater Basin Updated Forecast Report presented by Mojave County. City Manager Walsh?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Like to introduce Scott Holtry. He's the Development Services Director for Mojave County and overseeing the water, groundwater observations and management and modeling and all of that. So with that, I'll turn it over to him and I'll just also point out that we've got Supervisor Lingenfelter here with us, as well as Jamie Macy from USGS. So, Scott, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor and council members. This is a great opportunity to be able to come and present to you. At the end of my presentation, I will have Jamie Macy from USGS come up and say a few words and also be available for questions that you may have as well. This is a report on the Walupi Valley Groundwater Basin Update Forecast for the Walupi Valley Basin where we put a lot of time and data into this report. We want to especially thank the City of Kingman for being partners with us in this model that we've created. For those of you that don't know, this model was created back in the 2019-ish, and we partnered with the City of Kingman and USGS to create this water model for the Walupi Valley Basin. With that, we've been able to determine the acres that are being farmed within this Walupi Valley, as well as the water usage that is coming out of it. In today's presentation, we'll be able to reference the report that was done in 2021 and then the now updated report that we've been able to accomplish here in 20, it was done in 2024. And I apologize for my date. I did give this presentation to the Board of Supervisors yesterday, so I still have June 16th on my presentation. Just to kind of start out, the first thing that we did is we wanted to observe what is being cultivated here in the Walupi Valley Basin. We did that using drone technology. We have a drone pilot within our Flood Division at Development Services. He was able to observe exactly what is being cultivated and farmed within the Walupi Valley Basin. These are some of the images that he took from that drone observations of the farms in this area. For those of you that don't know, the groundwater basin is like a big bowl, and with that, in the Walupi Valley Groundwater Basin, we actually have a big bowl with three other bowls. It's broken up into the Southern Greg Basin, which is, which is north, and you can kind of see it there on our presentation. Walupi Sub Basin, there is in the middle, and then the Kingman Sub Basin down at the bottom in the green. With our observations, we were able to look and see what was being farmed in each of those sub basins and develop an acreage of how many acres were being irrigated. To go to the Southern Greg Sub Basin, we were able to observe 1,826 total acres being cultivated at this time. Compared to the study that we did in, or the observations that we did in 2019, were approximately 1,242 acres greater than we were at that time as far as the acres being In the Walupi Sub Basin, we actually saw a decrease in the amount of acres being cultivated. There's about a total of 6,543 acres being cultivated in that sub basin, and approximately 5,650 acres fewer than the 2019 observations. Last is the Kingman Sub Basin. This is where the City of Kingman has their wells for water production in the city limits. We observed 8,131 total acres being cultivated, and this is approximately 6,800 acres increase than the observations in 2019. So we did see quite a bit of increase in the Kingman Sub Basin. And to kind of further explain the Kingman Sub Basin, there is an underground ridge that kind of divides the Kingman Sub Basin from the Walupi Sub Basin. So if the water levels get low enough, essentially the Kingman Sub Basin would separate and become its own basin. So the Walupi Basin is a lot deeper, a lot bigger, and the Kingman Sub Basin, there's a ridge in between them about where that green line is on your screen. And if at any time that water gets below that point, then that Kingman Sub Basin would separate from that larger basin. One thing that we wanted to make sure that we did was observe exactly what is being cultivated. We did observe a lot of orchard trees. That was the majority of what is being cultivated in the Walupi Valley Basin. We did, it was approximately 16,122 acres of orchard trees, and then we did see about 383 acres of vines being cultivated as well. I do want to explain that the farms and cultivation that we observed are on wells that are non-exempt, so they're able to pump more than 35 gallons per minute. All the farms, or I guess it would be smaller farms or vineyards that are producing irrigation on exempt wells are not included in this acreage. We do have a placeholder for those, that acreage or the water usage from those wells in a different portion of the presentation, but only the farms and the irrigated lands that use non-exempt wells were observed. With this, we used USGS's average use of water for that type of crop. So for the orchard, orchard trees are anywhere from 2.4 to 3 acre-feet per acre of cultivated land. We used an average because we had some newer trees and some more mature trees, we use an average, and the same average that USGS used of 2.72 acre-feet per acre. And then with the vines, they usually take less water, so we used 1.01 acre-feet per I apologize, probably not going to be able to read a whole lot on this chart, but a lot of it is the same information that we just observed from the different basins that we looked at. In green is the 2021 study that was performed by USGS and their observations. And with that, you can see the cultivated acres in 2019, we were at 14,090, which had an estimated water demand of 26,060. With that, the county provided information based on the rate of growth of some of the farms in the area, and we gave that data to USGS, and we were able to project into the future what we thought the amount of cultivated acres would be and the estimated water demand for 2024. And that's the number that you'll see at the bottom circled. We were projecting that the estimated water demand would be 79,050 acre-feet. Come to 2024, if you look in the blue, like we mentioned before, some of, we did see a decrease in some of the basins as far as how many acres were being cultivated. We did still see an increase. We're grateful that it wasn't the increase that was projected in 2021. As you can see, the total, estimated total acre-feet of land being cultivated was 16,505 with a water demand of 44,252. It's about 34,000 less than what they were projecting in 2021, but it still is an increase to our water demand. These two graphs, again, they're probably a little hard to see, simulate the model of water usage in the Walupi Basin. The top graph also, it specifies the Kingman Sub Basin is that top line, the Walupi Sub Basin is the second line down. And as you can see, the, and this is the pump rate that the wells will be able to pump at and as it projected into the future. So the top line is the Kingman Sub Basin with the deficit that is being depleted from the Kingman Sub Basin. The model projects out to about 2120 before it starts seeing a pretty significant dip. And then it increases as you continue. If you think about it, if you think about it like a bowl, the edges of the bowl will start to deplete first, where the middle of the bowl, you'll still have a little bit more water, so that's why you see a steeper decline as you continue into the future. The second graph to the bottom, or the second graph there at the bottom, shows the average depth to water. Currently, the Kingman Sub Basin, and this is specifically for the Kingman Sub Basin, we're about 600 feet down. Again, as you project into the future, you can see that around 2120 is where we hit the 1,200-foot mark. The 1,200-foot mark is what ADWR indicates is water adequacy within the state of Arizona. It doesn't mean that we're out of water. What it does mean is that we're probably going to need to drill further down, and it's going to be more costly, you'll have higher costs in pumps, and then also the water quality might be a little bit worse off, you might have to do some treatment. But the 1,200-foot mark is where we, about a little less than 100 years out that we see us hitting that 1,200-foot mark. The chart on the left is the study that was done in 2021 from USGS. We compared it side by side in that blue graph, or blue chart on the right. As you can see, we have a natural recharge of about 5,000 acre-feet a year that goes back into the basin. Incidental recharge, about 4,500, those are going to be your septic systems and wells that are leaking into the aquifer as well. And then we do have infiltration projects and recharge. In 2021, we were projecting about 1,200 acre-feet a year of infiltration projects. In the 2024 update, we have not included any of those in there just because we are still in the works on a lot of our infiltration projects, and I'll get to those at the end of the presentation, but we do expect some infiltration projects here in the near future. So the total amount of, that is coming into the basin is about 9,500. We have a natural discharge that goes into Lake Mead of about 5,600. The City of Kingman wells themselves is about 8,627, and then if you include the foothills utility wells, it's an additional 268, which would come to about 8,900 acre-feet a year. Personal wells, this is where I was describing maybe some of the vineyards that you see up north of the Valley Vista, or anybody that has a private well out in the rural areas. We estimated about 1,227 acre-feet depletion each year. Then we add the agricultural wells that we described earlier of 44,252. Our total deficit comes to 50,474, as compared to our deficit in 2021 was 30,900. Some of the things that we're doing, we currently have Sierra Vista Recharge Basin, it's our first basin that we built. We did have a few rainstorms since we built it, but our monitoring system hasn't worked quite properly, so we haven't been able to see what has been able to go into the basin yet. We're still working on that. You see that picture on the left. It is a very small recharge basin that we presented. We do have four other ones that are currently being designed that are a lot larger. These infiltration basins serve two purposes. As Flood Control Department and Development Services, one of our main responsibilities is to help slow the flow and the cause of flooding downstream. These basins do that. At the same time, we can hold the water and be able to find areas that they will be able to infiltrate the basin. That's what we've been able to do throughout the county, or specifically in the Kingman Sub Basin. We have several projects designed and ready to go, also grant-funded, so it does help that we're able to pay for them. Those are coming online, and we should be able to start a few of those projects in the near future. The other thing that we are doing, and we're grateful that we're able to partner with the City of Kingman with, is a groundwater monitoring well. We have three proposed. One is on city property at the airport, and those are in the design phases as well. We should be hopefully drilling those in the near future. I would say maybe two or three months. With that, in conclusion, I'd like to, again, thank the city and the county for our partnership that we have. I think being proactive is the main goal here. It's not doom and gloom. We're not here to say we're going to be out of water. We still have water, but what we want to do is make sure that we're prepared. We can see that we are being depleted. We're not recharging the same amount of water that we're taking out of the aquifer. It's not going to mean that we're going to be completely dry in the near future, but it may mean that we have to drill further down or treat the water. So we want to be proactive. We love that we've been able to partner with the city and create this model. Mojave County is committed to produce this report annually. We're going to do our observations and produce this report every year. I think the more data that we have, the better the information that we're going to be able to produce and the better knowledge that we'll have going forward. With that, I do want to give a little bit of time to Jamie Macy from USGS to add a few comments.
Thank you, Scott. Vice Mayor, council members, my name is Jamie Macy. I'm the Acting Center Director for the Arizona Water Science Center of the United States Geological Survey. I'm a hydrologist and geologist by training. This study really started back in 2007 with Arizona Department of Water Resources and their Rural Watershed Initiative. Between 2007 and 2013, the USGS was here studying these basins to understand the size of the basin, the depth of the basin, and how much water was available. Back then, I worked in the field, and I was actually on the ground here in Mojave County in the City of Kingman, working in the basins, collecting the data for those studies. But it was right around 2016 that Nick Haunt from Mojave County and Development Services came to us at USGS and asked us to look back into the studies and develop the groundwater model that Scott was talking about. That groundwater model was meant to be a tool as a partnership between the City of Kingman and Mojave County so that you all had a tool to be able to look at your groundwater and manage your resources. USGS, we are not a regulatory agency. We'll never tell you what to do with your water, but we're here to provide you with information so that you all can make the best decisions of how to manage your resources. So we developed this tool for the City of Kingman and Mojave County to use the information that we had in 2019 to produce the best model possible, using the best scientific knowledge that we had at the time. With any model, the data that you have that goes into the model is the limitation. The better the data, the better the model, and we've continued to collect data, the county has continued to collect data about the water use in Walupi Basin. It's one of the most important things to understand in Walupi Basin is the amount of water being used. If you saw those charts that Scott put forward, when you look at the deficits in Walupi Basin, it's primarily due to the water use. We know in Arizona, we don't get the amount of rain that we used to, and we just don't get a lot of rain in general. We don't get a lot of recharge into aquifer systems, so it's that water use that's most important to manage and to understand. So as the USGS, we've worked with Mojave County, we developed the model and published it in 2019. Now Mojave County, we have worked with them and trained personnel within the county to be able to run the model, and they are inserting new data into the model as it's collected. As you saw from Scott's presentation, they've been able to fly drones to look at water use. We at USGS use aerial photography from, photographs from planes that fly. So they have high resolution from drones. We use planes at USGS. We work with Arizona Department of Water Resources across the state to look at water use in all, in many basins. Arizona Department of Water Resources prioritizes a series of basins every year to look at. In USGS, we work with them directly to measure that. So when we look at a basin and the amount of water use, especially with agriculture, we look at the type of crop, we look at the type of watering, whether it's a center pivot, whether it's drip irrigation, whether it's flood farming, and we look at the climate because across Arizona, there are different climates. So the crop, the type of watering, the climate within Arizona that it's at, for the amount of water, the consumptive use of those plants, to understand how much water is being used in these basins and how much water is needed in the basins for the agriculture and municipal uses. So this model that we have developed is a partnership with the City of Kingman, with Mojave County. The data continues to get entered into that model and updated. I'm pleasured to hear that that model's going to be updated every year by you and the county, and that you'll continue to get that information to make the decisions that you all need to make about your water resources. Thank you. I'm here for any questions you may have about our current monitoring, future modeling, future monitoring, or anything else you may want to know about water resources here in Northwestern Arizona.
All right, thank you. Council, do you have any questions? Councilor Savage?
Hi, Scott. Just a couple quick questions for you. On the water withdrawal chart that you had up there, it didn't say whether, there was a few screens back, if it was annually or monthly on acre-feet of water that was used per acre?
Vice Mayor, Councilman Savage, yes, it's annually.
Okay. My second question is, on the monitoring well depth, how deep does that go for the monitoring?
For the monitoring, on the well, we're going to go, actually, I'm not, I don't think I have that information. We're going to go down as far as we need to, especially on the well that is nearest to that ridge. We're going to have one that's going to be right near that ridge so we can tell when the water's going to drop below that level. USGS had three monitoring wells, and maybe Jamie can speak to them a little bit, within this area that were vandalized. We're going to be creating three new wells that will be better secured, we're going to secure them pretty good so that they can't be vandalized, but we're also partnering with USGS and their systems to be able to monitor them. I don't know, do you have depths on those wells?
Yes, so three wells are proposed. Two of them are in deeper parts, they're all in the Kingman Sub Basin, so most important to the Kingman municipal water supply. Two of the wells will go down close to 1,100, 1,200 feet. The other one is a little shallower because it's close to Long Mountain, which is where it was discussed, the Bedrock High is at, which would separate Walupi Basin from the Kingman Sub Basin. So the third well is shallower, but it's really close to that ridge so we can understand when and if that separation would occur. As Scott was saying, the wells will be secured. We have monitoring equipment that will record every 15 minutes, so we get a water level every 15 minutes. It'll be transmitted to the internet hourly, and it's kind of like watching grass grow, but watching groundwater levels change over time. You can see them on your own computers at any time of the day, hourly, new updates to what your groundwater levels are doing.
All right, council, any other questions? Counselor?
First, I want to thank you both for being here and for the partnership that we have. I think, well, I know that having this data has made a huge difference in how we proceeded forward and being able to get the INA. My question is for you, Jamie. We hear a lot of nonsense about the data and whether or not it's accurate, and I know this is a ridiculous question, but can you speak to the accuracy of the data and the numbers and the model?
So originally, when the model was created, the numbers that were used were data that we had on the ground and data that was projected, and the City of Kingman and Mojave County worked on the projection numbers together. At that point, Nick Haunt with Mojave- At that point, Nick Hunt with Mojave County was leading this effort, and he produced the numbers that we would use for the projections. So at USGS, we did not come up with those numbers ourselves. That was developed between the city and the county to say, these are our best guesses of what may happen into the future. Every year that we get new numbers, those numbers can be updated. The current numbers are very accurate. The only way they would be more accurate is if you put a water meter at every single well around the basin. This is the best way, using the drone systems and aerial photography, to be able to estimate those water use numbers. This is the best data that you can have. But going into the future, those projections are still estimates of what could happen into the future. And that's why it's most important to continue to collect the data on an annual basis and update the model. Because as you update the model, you may see that the water levels are not decreasing as fast as projected, because the water use is not as much as it was projected.
I do have a couple of questions. Um, first of all, uh, Manager Walsh, the well that is offline right now, is that?
A recharge well?
A recharge well, yeah, can you tell me how that's gonna affect our basin, once it goes online?
Yes, so we have, the the city approved the the installation of recharge well, and it is ready to go, it's been approved, we have a permit for it. Um, what we are working with, we have um, we have a permit from ADQ, and based on their standards, we can recharge water into the basin already. Um, we wanted to double check, make sure that that water that we're putting back into the basin is, you know, high quality water, we're we're putting it back into the aquifer, we wanna make sure we don't um, put anything in there that we'll we'll regret later on. Um, so we we tested the effluent um, based on drinking water standards. And based on drinking water standards, there were a few areas that we need to address in order to get it to that to that standard. Um, so basically what we're looking at, once we do have those issues addressed and we're able to start putting water back in the ground, we're looking, I I wanna say the estimates are right around a thousand uh, acre feet per year, so.
Okay, and which basin will that go into?
That will go back into the Kingman sub-basin.
Into the Kingman sub-basin? Okay, so then that leads me to asking my question to Scott, is that in the model? Is that in any projections that that recharge?
Uh, Vice Mayor, currently no, we did not uh, put any recharge from our, from the city or the county in the model right now.
Okay, all right. And then um, my other question is, are we, is ADWR receiving accurate reporting information from the farms?
We reached out to ADWR recently, I think last month, to check, to see if they had received any well information from the farms. Uh, they got back to us that they do not have the data. Whether or not they're still inputting it, or whether or not nobody reported, we don't know. But uh, we, they did not have any of that data, so we weren't able to use any of it.
Okay, so we don't have accurate data from the farms, we are using technology, and that's how we're speculating what they're they're pumping, what their usage is?
Yeah, so with that, we um, it's probably more on the conservative side, because we're looking at exactly what is on the ground. And then we give that plant or the crop that is being cultivated a number. Whether or not they're dumping more water onto it, we don't know. But we're we're taking, okay, what does it take for that crop to grow, and how much are they growing? And that's the number that we produced.
Okay, would you say that's worst case scenario, or pretty conservative?
I'd say that's pretty conservative.
Okay, perfect. My last question is, um, in the reporting, were there fewer farms added to the original projected numbers once this new report came out?
Um, there were more acres being cultivated this, with this report.
But less farms reported?
Um, I would have to get back to you on how many farms. You're you're talking about the entities that were involved?
Yeah, just based off of the, I mean, we we started out with projections, right? That's how we we got our baseline, and then we're gonna adjust every year according to the current most, you know, most current data, so I was just curious.
I was gonna say, one of the big changes too, is when farming started in Walupi Basin, there was a lot of alfalfa farming. Alfalfa takes quite a bit more water. The farmers decided to switch, cuz they realized the alfalfa was just too water intensive, or whatever reason they decided to switch. But alfalfa is very water intensive, they have moved over to a lot of orchard farmin's, nut trees, which use less water. So there has been a change, whether it's the total number of acres, there has definitely been a change in the water use because of the type of crop that's also being grown.
Which would lead me to ask, I I mean, were you, it would be less, correct? Alfalfa is more heavy on the usage of water, as you said, and since they switched, it less uses of?
Than was originally projected.
Than projected, okay, all right.
So just just uh, kinda go back to my chart here. In the cultivated acres, for the twenty nineteen observations, we we observed fourteen thousand nine ninety um, acres being cultivated. And then in twenty twenty-four, we did see an increase of acres being cultivated. Whether or not they switched from the alfalfa to the trees, um, we did see quite a bit of that. But now we see sixteen thousand five hundred and five acres being cultivated. Uh, our water demand did go up to that forty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-two.
Okay, all right, that's all I had, any other questions?
Can I, can you just clarify, just to make sure we all understand? When you do your projections, it's based on acres cultivated dot number of farms, correct?
That is correct.
And from the twenty-one projections to the twenty-four, what you are seeing, even though there's a change in of type of crop, it is still an increase in water use?
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Staley. All right, that's all we had, thank you so much. All right, we'll move on to presentations, item two B, ASU Project Cities presentation. The ASU Project Cities program update on survey and report.
All right.
Hi, welcome Bennett.
Thank you, good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council. Um, in January of two thousand twenty-five, uh, the city of Kingman partnered with ASU Project Cities to examine uh, the potential for public work, uh, public art and programming in the city of Kingman. So what what we did is we worked with graduate students and the faculty at the Master of Urban and Environmental Planning. And so um, to basically look and explore the strengths and opportunities of art in the city of Kingman. So their work included public engagement component. Uh, they also looked at comparable cities outside of, not only in Arizona, but outside of Arizona. And um, so they looked across the country, and they also looked at recommendations that would be tailored to our community. So uh, now, what we'll do is I will turn it over to one of those students who will walk us through the project, which will also include uh, final recommendations and our next steps. So with that, I believe Sadia is on the on the um, call?
Yep, I'm here.
All right, thank you.
Hello, everybody, uh, my name is Sadia Amin, and I will be presenting our graduate project that we did with the city of Kingman in collaboration with the School of Geographic Sciences and Urban Planning and Project Cities at ASU. I'll be presenting on developing a playbook for the community arts in.
Excuse me, Sadia? Sadia, can you speak into your mic a little bit more so we can hear you?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Um, can you hear even better?
Not much better.
Sorry, um, is this better now?
Counselor? Yeah, it's a little better.
Okay, um, so um, today I will go through the project motivation, our planning process, and finally, the playbook of recommendations for the city of Kingman. Um, next slide please. So the purpose of this project was to assess the concurrent conditions of public art in the city and provide a framework for cohesive art program. Kingman already has a solid foundation in public arts, especially in its downtown. Um, we found out that what's lacking is a formal structured program.
Excuse me, Sadia?
Yeah.
Yes, um, we're really having a hard time hearing this. Um, I I didn't know if maybe I could just um, go through the slides, or if somebody, if um, there's another student that maybe has a little bit better uh, volume?
Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, Sadia, why don't you shoot me over the talking points you have, so I don't make sure, so I make sure I don't miss anything? Um, but I can can go through this. Um, so while Sadia does it, council members, my name is Megan Ellens. Um, I am Associate Director of Planning at ASU, and I've had the pleasure of leading this group, along with Matt Gomez, who's on the call, um, and Allison Almond from Project Cities. And so I'll run through the slides and and make sure to get Sadia's talking points. So the structure of the project, the idea was, Kingman has a lot of assets already in public arts, but specifically providing a structure, so you can think about that in a really concerted and um, strategic way moving forward. So the project itself includes three main deliverables. So the first was a public engagement component. This included an online survey and a community workshop um, in Kingman, and we'll briefly touch on that. Um, there is an extensive community analysis of peer cities across the country, looking at what they do for public arts programming, um, that's in the case study report. And then the real deliverable here is the, or the significant one that we'll present today at least, is the playbook of recommendations for Kingman themselves, or yourselves rather. So the community engagement survey, this was launched between February and March of this past spring in twenty twenty-five, and uh, the three graduate students working on this project, Sadia included, collected four hundred and thirteen responses from the community. Just wanna highlight a couple of the key takeaways from this survey. Um, in terms of who took the survey, it was a pretty even mix in terms of sort of a younger segment of the community, um, middle age, and then more senior citizens within the community. Um, and the vast majority of people either lived in Kingman or owned property in the city. Um, in terms of the results of the survey related to public art, so we asked them a few different components. Um, the first question was, what what kind of art do you wanna see more of in Kingman? If you really focus on the green bars here, you see that there's actually quite a lot of agreement around a diversity of art forms, murals, indigenous art, sculptures, um, all of these things were received pretty unanimous support. Um, the lower ranking items here included performances, uh, sensory art, as well as light-based work. So in terms of where community, uh, where public art should be a priority, again, if you focused on the dark green, the light green, you kind of see a a few patterns emerge. Um, there is a prioritization for diversity around art in the downtown, high visibility places along corridors, um, Kingman entryways, so the highway um, entry points to the community, and then parks and trails and civic spaces. Commercial areas, hotels, received a little, little less support, but still about half of people supported that. Um, and then hidden places, industrial areas, residential neighborhoods, had the lowest amount of of agreement around it being a either moderate or high priority. So in terms of the role of public art in the community, you can see a lot of agreement um, across a wide spectrum of reasons why this matters, ranging from beautification, history, tourism, supporting artists. Um, you have the slides here, and so you can look at that in more detail and ask us questions as well. Uh, and then in terms of funding, this is always the big question for a community, how should it be funded? Um, strong agreement around grants and donations, as well as sponsorships from businesses. Um, city of Kingman General Tourism Funds was also a little bit below fifty percent, talked about that as well. The second component, community engagement, involved a workshop, where the students had a variety of opportunities for community of community members and visitors who were in Kingman that day to provide a sense of what they loved about Kingman and how that translated into public arts. And so there was an opportunity to provide a word cloud and sort of talk about what that looked like for the community. But then there were these series of maps that specifically talked about where people would like to see more public art and what's kind. Um, this will be more extensively discussed in the report, but we at least wanted to give you a flavor for the amount of activity that people focused on downtown versus our Zone Two, which was the hilltop area, what the west side of Kingman, and then northeast Kingman. So you really get a sense of that density in downtown, but there was still interest in spreading that out in other areas. The case studies, I'll just briefly highlight that the students looked at fifteen case studies. They did this in a two-step process, they identified a number of criteria that were relevant to Kingman, um, and then identified fifteen cases for what we are calling these quick takes. So sort of high-level overviews, you get a sense of what each of these communities are doing. And they were selected both because they are similar to Kingman, many of them are on Route sixty-six, but not all of them. They're similar size, they they have successful arts programming. Five of them we're looking at as in-depth features, and so we go through a series of ten different criteria where we're looking at this more in-depth view of what they do, why they do this, what's successful and what's not working, to provide lessons learned. Um, and then we get into the playbook for Kingman itself. Sadia, I'm wondering if you have, think you have any luck on volume-wise? I'd love to have you showcase this, cuz this is your main contribution, if not, I'll jump in, do you wanna try?
Yeah, I could try.
Next volume you can give, and we'll try it, and Bennett, let me know if that's not working.
Okay, um, so uh, for uh, our policy recommendations, we uh, recommend uh, three uh, three things. First, art master planning. Uh, we noticed that Kingman does not have any uh, art, public art uh, policies integrated into its planning documents. Uh, so we suggest firstly to integrate that, especially in the Economic Development Strategic Plan in the long term, and and the updated general plan in the, in the, in the short term, and the upgraded general plan in the long term. Um, we also recommend zoning for arts, um, looking at various communities in Arizona. Uh, we realize that Kingman can actually expedite its permitting processes and identify specific places and spaces for art, uh, that can be reserved for um, installations such as murals and sculptures, et cetera. Uh, we also recommend that uh, Kingman form an art advisory board that would look like a seven-to-nine member board, responsible for all the logistical tasks related to public arts, such as taking inventory, doing maintenance, or um, processing the um, art applications from all various artists and creative people. Um, next slide please. Um, in terms of funding, uh, we learned from our case studies that a percent for art, which is um, one percent of, which is where one percent of the development fees goes towards the art program, is a very common strategy for communities that have a sustained art program. So we suggest that Kingman looks into developing that also. Um, and local collaborations with uh, local businesses in the city, and also strengthening partnerships with organizations in Arizona, such as the Arizona Commission for the Public Arts, uh, will help Kingman have a diversified um, stream of funding uh, that can go towards the public arts uh, in the city. Um, stewardship recommendations, uh, we uh, learned from our community workshop that a lot of people feel home at Kingman because of its uh, natural landscape and the mountains. So we were uh, looking into, uh, we were, we suggest that Kingman enhances that experience of home for the people through having art on hiking routes and the, and in the mountains and natural areas. Um, and then also building upon art events that already exist in the city to have um, more collaboration with the residents and people there. Uh, maintenance is also an integral part of uh, having a successful arts program. Uh, so uh, this is where the public art, uh, the public arts advisory board also comes in, where it can conduct a regular inventory of existing arts, looking at what can be kept and what can be rolled over. Uh, this is, uh, they can also uh, suggest what could be done with like derelict uh, infrastructure in the city and make it into art, for example, the uh, historic signage or signpost that Kingman has, which are not in use anymore, they can be used to make art. And the um, and the uh, art advisory board can suggest what what can be done with that. Uh, next slide please. So uh, as I said before, Kingman already has a fair grounding in public arts. Uh, what it needs is a formal program and uh, a sense of creative place-making, where it can enhance the city uh, fabric in terms of public arts beyond its downtown. Uh, the city already has a strong foundation, it has a legacy rooted in Route sixty-six. Um, and there's a huge opportunity to make, to formalize the program and make it more cohesive, more coherent. Um, the city has huge potential, and all it needs to do is address these challenges of limited resources or limited funding and ongoing maintenance to uh, establish itself as a city that provides, prioritizes um, its art program.
Sadia, I can do this part, that's no problem.
Okay.
Um, so the final component of this. So, the final component of this, we wanted to add to let you know about our deliverable timeline. So we are delivering three components to the city. The draft case study report is in review, the public engagement report, and the draft policy report will be under review by the city within the next week and a half or so. And the goal is to get this over to you by July 11th. You'll have all of the components. In addition, because we're partnered with Project Cities, Project Cities does some additional formatting and graphic design work, so you'll get their fully polished version in the fall. Want to close just with the next steps. So the next steps here, as this, these final versions of the report get passed on to the city, the economic development team is going to bring the report back to the Economic Development Commission. And the idea here is twofold, that the commission review the community engagement, the case studies, and the policy recommendations, and then really identify a set of short-term priorities and action items, based on those recommendations, to begin the implementation process. And with that, we will take whatever questions you may have.
All right, thank you. That was a great presentation. Council, do you have any questions, comments? No? All right, well, thank you so much. Again, thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you all.
All right, call to the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no more than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter, or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Do we have any call to the public?
Vice Mayor, there's nobody signed up tonight.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move to our consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Council, does anybody wish to remove anything from the consent? All right. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Oh, second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on to action items. Action item 5A, acceptance of mural donation from Sounds of Kingman. At the May 21st, 2025 Parks, Aquatics, Recreation and Trails Commission, the Sounds of Kingman proposed to paint a mural on the restroom building located at Charles Metcalf Park, 315 West Beale Street, Kingman, Arizona. The mural will face Grandview Avenue, and the Sounds of Kingman organization will pay for the mural installation and upkeep. The park committee, commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the mural. Staff recommends approval. I have Mike Mirsman to introduce you fine ladies.
I can introduce myself, I bet.
I'm sure you can. Go ahead, Mike.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Robin Gordon is here to talk about this, the mural on the back of the restroom at Metcalf Park. And she did a great job really presenting it to our commission, too, so we're really looking forward to it. And I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, Robin.
Hi, thank you. We really appreciate the, all the help that Mike has given us on this project. And in fact, if you look at the picture, which I think you all have a copy of what the murals looks like, right there, it's going to look like. Originally, the heart in the center that says Kingman, Arizona was not included in our original plan, and it was Mike's recommendation, and I think it was a really good one, that we include Kingman, Arizona, so that when people take pictures and go home with them, that we have branding. So, I just want to thank Mike for that great recommendation. I know he's going to hit me in a minute, because he doesn't like it very much when you recognize that he helped out. But he really has been a great help with this. With me tonight, I have Monica Galicia. She is the artist that's going to be painting the mural. She's a local artist. I also have with me tonight several members from my committee, Roseanne Rosenberg, Jan Cox, and Cheryl Eagle, they're in the audience. Wave, ladies, there we go. Basically, what we're looking to do is, we're looking to add some color to Metcalf Park and improve the, what people see when they drive into Kingman. We decided to propose putting this mural on the backside of the restroom. If you think about how that would be seen, when you're coming in on the highway or off the highway, that side of the building is visible. Whereas, other locations in the park that we had considered, like the back of the stage, really aren't visible from the street, and we wanted it to be visible. We wanted to encourage people to stop and take pictures, and spend time in the park, and spend more time in Kingman. Like we were told, we're planning on paying for the entire project, and also plan to maintain the mural, so there would be no cost to the city for this project. With that, I guess I would answer any questions you have, and I hope you'll think this is as good an idea as I do.
Thank you so much. Council, do you have any questions, comments? I think it's a fantastic idea, and I like that, I like that it's so vibrant.
Yeah.
I think, think it's going to be.
I think it's eye-catching, for sure.
Yeah, and a full edition, and I love the addition of the Kingman, Arizona.
Don't quit that mic.
All right, we, council does not have any questions?
I did want to say that included with the mural will be two different coatings, one of which is UV-protected, and the other one is a coating that will make graffiti easier to remove off the mural. So, we've really been looking at the whole picture and trying to make sure we did the best job that we could do, and we're really happy that Monica designed this mural, and we think it's going to be a great addition to the park.
All right, thank you so much.
I'd also like to invite everyone in the community, as well as yourselves. Our next concert is this coming Sunday. It's a group called, oh boy, Desert Sky, and the concert is from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Metcalf Park, and they're free to the public. So, this is our 14th season of doing concerts at Metcalf Park, and I'm really proud of what we've been able to offer to the community, an addition to downtown.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I do have a question that came to my mind. Do we have an estimation of when this will be completed, this project?
Yeah, so, as you know, it's getting hotter and hotter, so that means I am planning to work on it like from 5:00 a.m. to about 9:00 a.m., and that will take about a couple days. But as soon as I order in the pieces that I need and everything that I need, I plan on being there a couple days a week. So, I'm estimating, I don't want to work in August, but if I have to, I will, but it will take a couple weeks. Yeah, it'll definitely be done by like Oktoberfest. You know, like when, when it starts, long before then, but it'll be done by this summer. Yeah.
All right, perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept this generous donation from Sounds of Kingman.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to public hearings, and we have none. Then we'll move on to department reports. Do we have a legislative update for Mr. Dorn?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I was talking with Tom. I know he is busy watching the budget meetings right now, so he was going to try and get on, but it looks like he might still be caught up in those meetings.
All right, great, thank you. All right, announcements by mayor, council members, city manager. City manager Walsh, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight, thank you, madam.
All right, Councilman Walker?
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Savage?
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Ward?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Daley? Councilman Dykens?
Nothing.
All right, moving on to council requests for future reports and updates. Does anyone have a request? All right, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.